Good evening, everyone. It is 6:00 PM on April 22nd, 2024, and I'd like to call the City Council Meeting to order. We'd like to begin by inviting Pastor John Dees of Crosspoint Church up to the dais for the invitation.
Let's all just take a moment and breathe and take a moment just to be still before the Lord. And if there's anything in your heart right now that you need to ask His forgiveness about, now would be a good time to do it. Just take a moment. If you have a deep burden in your life right now, just take a moment and lay it before Him. Father, I thank you for Madison, Alabama. I thank you for allowing us to meet tonight. Thank you for these leaders. Thank you, Lord, that they have a good task before them. It's oftentimes a thankless task, but Lord, be with them. I'm reminded of Proverbs 3:5 and 6. This is always a good one for us to remember, that we are to trust in the Lord with all of our hearts and lean not unto our own understanding. But, Lord, You tell us in all of our ways to acknowledge You, and You will direct our path. So, Lord, I pray for this meeting tonight. I pray that Your Spirit would be upon this place, and I pray that You would direct these leaders of our community in the paths that are right. And I pray this in the matchless name of Christ Jesus our Lord. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Please join me in the pledge.
Mayor Finley?
Here.
Councilmember Robleski?
Here.
Councilmember Spears?
Here.
Councilmember Powell?
Here.
Councilmember Shaw? Council President Bartlet?
Here.
Councilmember Denzine?
Here.
Councilmember Seaford?
Here.
Are there any amendments to the agenda?
We have one amendment tonight. That would be Resolution Number 2024-100. Specifically, as far as the item goes, there's an amount listed here for 1.7 million. That is being changed to an amount of $495,000. And we have substituted a revised resolution for 24-100. That would also reflect that revised amount.
Okay.
There's a copy of that resolution for each on the dais.
So, the revised amount is for what?
495.5, I'm sorry, left out.
495.5, and I don't know if you want to let Mary Beth speak to the reason for the change. Would you mind coming to the dais and explaining to council the nature of the change?
Yes, as part of that agenda item that you have currently at the 1.745, that included various phases of plan development, what we would call design development plans, construction development plans. It also included the architect helping us through the bidding process and through construction as well as closing out the project. So, basically, from where we are now to the end of a project. One component of that, as I mentioned, was the design development plans. And so, what we're suggesting this evening is rather than asking you to approve architectural consultant services for the entire process, whether it be a single-story building or a four-story building, we're asking that you approve just the design development plans for both scenarios, both the single-story and the four-story building, which would be that dollar amount that Brian just reviewed. And in your agenda packet, as part of that larger build, there was a cost item for design development that included both scenarios. You recall from your work session, you had wanted those two items covered. So, that's the basic reason. So, we're basically just scaling back what we're asking you to approve this evening. It would still build in flexibility for both scenarios. Once we finish the design development plans, assuming that's what you approve, we would be back before the council talking about next steps.
Okay, and the 1745-500 amount is still an accurate amount for the entire design project?
It is still an accurate amount for the entire design project. It also, originally, it was about 1.5 and change. It increased to 1.7 after that work session because you wanted the additional plans just for the single-story building included. And so, that's why it jumped up that amount.
And you still want it voted on first in the agenda before?
Well, as we discussed in the work session, it made sense to talk about the bigger project. So, if you were to take action on our amendment to recommend just the design development plans in association with Item A, then when you got to Item B, assuming Item A passed in that regard, when you got to Item B, you could just vote that down, or you could potentially pull it off of the agenda and not have to vote on it.
Okay, so if the first item passes, we would not have to vote on B, and it could be withdrawn.
Right, that's what Brian is nodding his head for.
I agree. You could table the second one if you wanted to, or you could just vote it down entirely.
Okay, okay. All right. And answer the question? Okay, I think we'll reserve questions for the specific proposal at the moment, but the agenda is approved as amended.
Thank you.
Next, we have approval of minutes Number 2024-07-RG.
May I have your approval?
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam President?
Yes.
I would like to make a request.
Okay.
Under the, on the first page of the minutes, there is a typo there. And we would like permission to correct that on one of the citizen's names. It should be an M instead of an N.
Okay, all right. So, with that one correction on a typo for the spelling of a person's name, could we have a motion in a second for the amended agenda?
May I have your approval?
Second, again.
All right, same motion, second. Can I have a vote on the amended agenda?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
I'm staying.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
And the amendment passes, now can we take up the motion for approval of the minutes with that one correction? We can ready for vote on the minutes as corrected.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
I'm staying.
Councilmember Powell? Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
And the minutes are approved. Next, we have presentations and awards, and we're going to begin with the library and Madison Friends of the Library.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Katie Moore. I'm the manager of the Madison Public Library. I'm just going to take a few minutes just to give you a couple highlights, let you know what has been happening with the library, and then we're going to have a brief presentation from the Friends. I will go ahead and get us started here.
You have to turn it on.
Turn it on.
If I know them, they turn it off to say batteries.
There's a power button on the left side.
Here we go. There we go. Okay, okay. So, first, we're going to take a quick look at some of our statistics from the most recent fiscal year that we have completed. And that will be fiscal year 2023. The Huntsville Madison County Public Library System is the busiest library system in the entire state of Alabama. And you all will be pleased to hear that the Madison Public Library is the highest circulating branch within HMCPL. So, Madison residents use their library in great numbers. You can see we had over 700,000 items circulated in this past fiscal year that we just finished up. We also had over 200,000 visitors. We do a lot of programming at the library, both for youth and adults. We did 547 youth programs, youth and teen, and 467 adult programs. Another activity that's very popular at the library is room reservations. That's everything from our study rooms to our larger auditorium rooms. Those are used by just individual residents, community groups, businesses, all sorts of uses for those rooms. They were reserved almost 5,000 times in the past year. And then finally, another service that we provide at the library is notarization. We did almost 1,000 notary appointments last year. Many of those take place in the evening and on the weekends when other notary options like banks are not available. And that is a service that we hear time and time again. People are very grateful that we provide. Okay, our first highlight is our book clubs. Book clubs are very popular at the library. We have several of them. This is a full list of everything that we offer. We have everything from the Time Out Club, which focuses on adults who like to read young adult novels, to High Octane, which is all of your suspense and thrillers. Mystery, Mirth, and Mayhem is Mauro's group. And they read kind of a little bit of everything. Truth is Stranger Than Fiction is all nonfiction. We do have a dedicated group of folks who really like the nonfiction. Knit One Read Two is another little bit of everything group. The Bullet Journal Book Club is not your typical club with an assigned book, but rather folks who just like to come together and talk about what they're currently reading and what they would recommend to other folks. One of our very special book clubs is the Next Chapter Book Club. That is for adults with intellectual disabilities. We offer both an in-person group and a Zoom group to meet all the needs of everyone who are interested in that group. And then we're introducing a brand-new service called Our Book Club in a Bag. This is multiple copies of a book along with discussion questions and hints for how you can run your book club. So, this is an easy, quick option for if you have a book club with your friends or folks at work or whatever. You can come in and you can check out your, check out a bag, and you've got everything you need for your group in one stop. So, we're very excited to be introducing those. Okay, another of our highlights is our Maker Space. The Maker Space has been an extremely popular service ever since we opened the library. We have a variety of equipment there, including, we have three 3D printers. We have a laser cutter, a small CNC machine. We have sewing machines, a vinyl cutter, podcasting equipment, and digital conversion equipment. So, if you have those old slides or old VHS tapes that you want to update, we can help you do that. We offer both group classes and individual appointments. Last year, we did 925 individual appointments and 118 programs and served over 4,000 attendees through both of those. We also completed 725 3D print requests. We make it available so that if you know how to do a design, you can just email the design to us, and we will print it and let you know when it's ready, and you can just come pick it up. Another new program that we have just started this spring is our Seed Library. Gardening is an extremely popular topic at the library. We do a lot of adult programming around gardening and partner with the Master Gardeners. So, we started the Seed Library this spring. We have seeds for a variety of different vegetables and also some wildflowers for helping to attract pollinators to your garden. We have currently given away over 2,500 seed packets. And this program has been completely funded through grants from the Master Gardeners, Agriculture in the Classroom, and also the Friends of the Madison Library. Ready-Set Kindergarten is a new program that is actually system-wide throughout HMCPL. This is a 10-week program that aims to help three- to five-year-olds learn the skills, learn and practice the skills that they need to ensure a smooth transition into kindergarten. Each week, they focus on a different topic, and those topics include things like colors, patterns, emotions, measuring, shapes, counting, self-esteem, all those types of things. This program is available at all 10 library branches. It's offered every day of the It's offered, um, every day of the week, there's a different branch offering that week's topic, so, um, we can make it as convenient as possible for everyone, um, and it is also a completely free program. The library also loves to be involved in community events. Um, it's, uh, some, we have, um, uh, some staff members who, um, specialize in riding the book bike and parades, um, so we have participated in events such as Celebrate Madison, uh, the Madison Street Festival, the Christmas Parade, and the Christmas Tree Lighting, and the Madison Witch's Ride. So we love to, uh, get out and support those community events. Our summer reading program is right around the corner. Um, that's always the highlight of every year. This year, the theme is Adventure Begins at Your Library. We'll be having our traditional Read Around the Block kickoff event on June 1st. Um, at the time that I put this presentation together, our guest author was still a surprise, but now I can tell you all that it is Debbie Dady. She is the author of The Bailey School Kids and Mermaid Tales, um, both very popular series with, um, our younger readers, um, so she will be a lot of fun. Um, at Read Around the Block, we'll also have games and crafts and food trucks. It's going to be a fantastic time, so highly encourage everyone to come check that out. All right, before I turn this over to the Friends of the Library, I would just like to say thank you so much for your support of library services. We truly appreciate it.
Thank you, Katie, and thank you to your staff for everything you do for our community.
Thank you, Lauren.
Hello, my name is Jeff Davis. I'm the president of the Friends of the Library Organization here in Madison, and on behalf of our group, we would like to present the library with a check for $16,000 and say thank you for all that you do and all of your hard work. Keep up the good work. Thank you.
Madam President, I'd just like to give a shout out. That money, uh, was created, curated from our bookstore. Um, we have a wonderful bookstore in the Madison Library where you can come in and find bestsellers, uh, there are DVDs in there, um, books of all kinds, some jigsaw puzzles, uh, it's a great resource, there's, um, a reasonable price, and many thanks to Janetta. She has organized it and, um, it's just been a huge blessing for the community and a wonderful moneymaker for, uh, the library that we're able to give directly back. Uh, we supported the seed program, support all sorts of programs, and it's through your generosity and shopping at the bookstore that we're able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Lauren. Thank you for your role as liaison to the Madison Library.
Thank you.
Uh, next, we have three proclamations by the mayor. Uh, we're going to begin with the, uh, April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Madison and the National Children's Advocacy Center.
This is from the National Children's Advocacy Center is coming up, and I'm not going to read this entire proclamation, but I do want to read a couple of things. First and foremost, as, as, uh, Brené said, the city council and the mayor of the City of Madison, Alabama, wish to honor the National Children's Advocacy Center for their commitment to servants' leadership and recognize their works in child abuse response and prevention as they raise awareness in the month of April for Child Abuse Prevention Month. And then, when it comes to our National Children's Advocacy Center, it serves as a model for more than 1,100, um, children advocacy centers operated in the U.S. in more than 41 countries worldwide. It's a model of a multidisciplinary team approach developed through the vision of former Congressman Bud Kramer, um, and, uh, a group of key individuals pulled together to make a difference. So with that said, we, as Paul Finley, Mayor of the City of Madison, I now proclaim April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the City of Madison. And with that, I can give you that.
You say something first and I'll give you.
Something. Uh, thank you to the, uh, city council and mayor Finley, uh, also Chief Gandy, uh, Chief Bailey back there, we partner with every single day. Uh, it's a team effort that we undertake to protect children, uh, best that we can prevent it every month, should be Child Abuse Prevention Month, uh, but it takes, uh, every adult should be looking to protect children from harm. Uh, it's our job to protect kids and we take that very seriously and appreciate the decades-long collaboration with the City of Madison, so, uh, really appreciate working with you all.
Okay, the next is a proclamation designating the week of May 5th through the 11th as the 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week.
So you want to come up, Ms. Lisa Thomas? Yeah, I'll come on up here. And while they're doing that, you know, the Office of Professional Municipal Clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world and it is the oldest among public service as far as, uh, that respective position. Um, it provides a professional link between the citizens and local governing bodies and agencies, um, of government at other levels. And as I go down to the end, uh, the most appropriate way we can recognize the accomplishments of the Office of Professional Municipal Clerks is to then proclaim May 5th through 11th as the 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week here in the City of Madison, and we thank you guys so much for all that you do for our city.
Um, I want to first thank my team because it not only takes a village and you all helping us through our everyday accomplishments. We look forward to helping our community, and like Mayor said, we're a bridge between the community and the council and just the city. So I want you to feel free to either stop by and say hi, or come by and get a notary. We do those also in our office free as well. So we'll do whatever we can do to help you. I mean, we are the clerks for the city, so thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
And finally, we have a proclamation designating May 2nd, 2024 as National Day of Prayer in the City of Madison, and Tammy Simmer coming forward?
Yeah, and I'm going to read just a little bit of this proclamation. National Day of Prayer has been part of the national heritage since it was declared by the First Continental Congress in 1775 and the United States Congress in 1952 as a joint resolution, that the president shall set aside and proclaim a suitable day each year, other than Sunday, as a national day of prayer, in which the people of the United States may turn to God in prayer and mediation, or meditation, excuse me, uh, in churches, in groups, and as individuals. So now, Paul Finley, mayor here of the City of Madison, proclaim May 2nd, 2024 as National Day of Prayer, and we thank you for bringing this to us and we're glad to give to you.
Thank you.
Yes, I just wanted to say that, um, if you're interested in participating in, uh, the observance of National Day of Prayer this year, it's always the first Thursday of May, but you can go to nationaldayofprayer.org and find, um, places where we are gathering to pray and ask the Lord to bless our city and our state and our nation. So thank you, Mayor, and the city council for this opportunity and the proclamation.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, next, we have public comments. Public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. When you approach today, please state your name and the district where you reside. We have had a number of comment cards turned in to us, uh, for tonight, so we're going to take the first one submitted slides in advance, and that's Robert Anderson.
Thank you, Madam President and Council. Uh, again, my name is Robert Anderson, I'm in District Four. Um, I am also the president of the Dublin Farms HOA, but I come to you this evening as a resident, not necessarily a representative of HOA. So I have here, uh, the names of 138 people that have signed a petition on change.org requesting the city to restore pedestrian access from the Bradford Creek Greenway to the Palmer Field, you know, Expansion Field 7 through 10, and also onto, uh, pedestrian access onto Dublin Farms, the community. So, um, I regularly see people that are walking along the bridges on Palmer to get either to the Greenway or to get to the soccer fields, and those are just not, may, there's no pedestrian access on those. Um, in 2021, when the expansion, uh, was completed, we had that pedestrian walkway for about 10 days, and then some rain came and it washed them out. And then the city, I think you guys came in, you, you moved some things around, I took some pictures here where it just shows, there's a lot of concrete that's just kind of piled. I walked up to those, there's hundreds of kids that play soccer near those every Saturday. Um, and so we're really just looking for some sort of update or when we might see that pedestrian access restored. I know a lot of the people in the community that I live in, that was a part of the cell to be in the community. We're right next to this expansion to Palmer Park, there'd be pedestrian access, um, and we just, we haven't seen that happen. It's been about two and a half years since the damage was done. I know we've reached out to the city before and they've told us a few times that it would be associated with the Palmer Bridges, um, so I was really just looking for an update on that. Uh, again, I, I do regularly see adults, kids, teenagers that are dangerously walking across those road bridges, um, but thank you for your time.
I can give a little bit of information on that.
Yeah, sure.
So in talking with Michael to, to, I say jet fuel this, but move it forward, we had it initially in, um, trying to obtain information on both the bridges on Palmer and these pedestrian bridges. What we're going to do is uncouple that and get two different things of which we can get those pedestrian bridges more quickly. I don't, I don't want to put a timeframe on it, but, um, he, it was months versus days, but we'll get that. Uh, then allows us to understand if it's a project that we need to bid out or a project that Public Works can do, and then what I hope to have in our budget going into next year is this as one of the projects that we would get done. So those are the bridges. Now, the, the Palmer, uh, uh, road improvements, that'll take a little bit longer.
Thank, thank you. I know that there's, with the, with the park, there's also questions, I don't want to go to anything else, but like the dog park, the, the fence has been destroyed for that, and also I know there was a plan for a, a playground there, it really hasn't, we don't know when that's going to come in either, but we would love it when it, when it does. But thank you for, for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Okay, next, we have a number of cards speaking on the library. We're going to begin with Rachel Homolak.
I'm here about the library and the obscene materials that are found in our libraries. Um, two weeks ago, I handed out an example from Let's Talk About It, um, How Wildly Inappropriate, and, um, just here to reiterate, uh, that we don't need that here in Madison. Um, moms like myself, um, we realize that we need to, you know, acknowledge the full community. So I am not in any way, um, trying to, uh, disconnect or try to, you know, discount certain communities, but we need to realize that the majority of the people in this community do not approve of sexualizing our children and using our libraries to do this. Um, one of the things that moms like myself have come up with is compromise. So you have one community that wants these sexually explicit materials in the library and the other that doesn't, and that wants to protect children so that they're not exposed to this. The compromise is simple, put these materials in the adult section, have an adult check them out so that a certain community can still have access to them, because they'll always scream, "We want equal and equitable access and we want intellectual freedom." Well, first of all, there's no equal and equitable, equitable access or intellectual freedom to sexualizing children. Children don't need to be knowing about certain sex toys like butt plugs and things like that. So we need to make sure that we, we are keeping our children safe. That should be the priority, not kowtowing and bowing towards a minority in our community. Um, the reconsideration process at the library also needs to be improved. Um, we've had librarians, um, on record saying that they get certain complaints and they don't have to do anything about it. Oh darn, we don't have to do anything about it. That's really disturbing. Um, they'll also, um, groups like Read Freely will come at you with a lot of emotional blackmail. Um, don't fall for it. Uh, this is, this has nothing to do with homosexual behavior, heterosexual behavior. This is just a sexual nature. We need to protect our children. Um, also in these books, there's going to be, um, information like about abortion and stuff that's illegal here, um, that's going to be encouraging children. Um, it also does damaging things like teaching children how to sext and to send, uh, nudies and whatnot, and how to blur out their eyes so that legally they won't get in trouble. So this, this stuff is very damaging and it needs to be addressed. Um, I know I only have three minutes, but it's a little awkward because we have our library board member present, and I'm just going to continue to challenge you to do the right thing, protect our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Susan Gaston Jones.
Good evening, again, my name is, oops, I put that a little bit lower. My name is Susan Gaston Jones, and my address is on file, I live in Madison. I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of families, but more precisely, children. I'm a mother of four grown children, and I now have the distinct honor and joy of being Gigi to six grandchildren so far, four of whom who live in Madison, and until recently, were frequenting the library. While I am grateful that we live in a society that encourages the freedom to, of the expression of and the exchange of ideas, I am profoundly saddened that that topic being discussed is the protection of children. Protecting children is the greatest responsibility and privilege that we have, and it just defies all logic and moral conscience that we are discussing it with library books. There are certain truisms that are sacrosanct regardless of demographics, religious preference, or social mores, and that is the innocence of children. They will spend the overwhelming majority of their lives dealing with sexual content, activities, and relationships. Childhood should be the one time when they are unaffected by a highly complex and emotionally-defining subject. We could probably all agree that a parent's job is fraught with pitfalls and potholes, and the proliferation of the internet, social media, and handheld devices has only exacerbated an already daunting task. An escape back to a simpler pastime would have been the library, that place uninterrupted by technology, where everything seems to offer a respite from digital chaos. Now that safe haven of relaxation is threatened by the unfettered access and availability of material the majority of us would characterize as inappropriate. What we are not proposing is book banning. I'm a teacher, I'd be the last person to promote censorship. But the minute this discussion ensues, the accusation is recklessly thrown out. Why? Because it's inflammatory speech. It's going to provoke an immediate outrage. At that point, any attempts at healthy, meaningful dialogue are extinguished. Again, I'm a schoolteacher. I teach physics, calculus, and chemistry. Now, I don't teach second grade, I'm, but I do know that teaching differential equations to second graders would be inappropriate. It doesn't make differential equations inherent.
Thank you, Ms. Jones, you're out of time. Thank you. The next person is...
Ms. Jones, do you, what district do you live in, so we can follow up?
I don't know. I just know I have a math class.
Okay, all right.
Okay.
That's right here. I asked her.
Okay, thank you.
The next person is Susan Stewart.
Hello, my name is Susan Stewart. I'm actually from Huntsville, but this is the public library system that's affected, that affects all of us. Um, my address is on file. I am one of the organizers of Madison County Chapter of Read Freely Alabama. We wanted to come here today to introduce our chapter and ourselves to you all and share our concerns regarding misinformation being spread about our local libraries and our organization. Read Freely is a grassroots organization that formed right here in Alabama by concerned residents who are committed to protecting the freedom to read. Our organization has over 3,000 active members statewide... Our organization has over 3,000 active members statewide with over 400 from right here in Madison County. I myself have lived in Madison County for the last 35 years. My husband and I raised our three children here with a lot of help from the resources in our public library. Moms for Liberty is a national anti-public school parental rights organization labeled an extremist organization by the Southern Poverty Law Center. They formed in Florida in 2021 to oppose masking requirements in schools. They expanded their mission to oppose teaching about racism, racism, and LGBTQ topics in schools. In the last year or so, they have taken their battle to our public libraries. Members of the local chapter of Moms for Liberty came here during the last meeting and tonight and did what they often do, bringing in copies of a section of a book taken out of context telling you that very young children can check out said book from our local library and that all they want the library to do is to have the book moved out of the children's section where it is likely not even located. And moving books, hiding them, making them less accessible is a form of censorship. We know that this is not all they want to do because if it was then, they would have been able to tell you that they had exhausted their options going through the library's reconsideration processes, but they didn't tell you about the actual reconsideration process that the library already has in place. They also didn't tell you whether they had even gone through that extensive process with the books they have brought before you. They don't just want books moved from the children's section. They instead want books containing any LGBTQ content banned from our library. Otherwise, they wouldn't be advocating for two pieces of legislation that are currently making their way through the legislature that would halt the acquisition of materials that have any mention of sexual orientation or gender identity, which the bills include in their definition of sexual content. These bills also move to criminalize librarians just for doing their jobs by removing their exemption from Alabama's obscenity code, asking the library to effectively serve in local parentas to make sure children don't see materials that their parents don't agree with. These demands should be major red flags for all of us as they move us in the direction of holding our library and librarians and potentially this city council criminally and civilly responsible for doing the job parents and guardians should be doing. I urge you to continue supporting the Huntsville Madison County Public Library and the board members you have selected and remember that the freedom to read is fundamental to a healthy democracy.
Thank you, Ms. Stewart. You're out of time. The next person is Greg McCormick.
My name's Greg McCormick. I'm with, I guess, District Four. And just last year, I moved here to Madison City with my wife and eight-year-old daughter. We moved here looking for a good Christian community and a safe place to raise and educate my daughter. I'm here today to talk about a recent experience. A friend and neighbor of mine told me that his kindergarten-aged daughter came home with a book from school. Basically, the book was named When Aiden Became a Brother. This book states that when Aiden became a brother, everyone thought he was a girl. Gender questioning in a children's book made available to a kindergartner to take home. Why is this book here? That's my question. We also identified that it, that it's in the public library too, here in Madison. Again, what are the intentions here? My daughter's a new reader and so, we've visited the Madison Library on many occasions. I would have, I would have expected the library to be a trusted source for parents and children to learn and enjoy. And with this issue, I'm certainly concerned about the exposure. We should all agree that not all situations are appropriate for discussing with young children and that when they do arise, it's the parent's discretion to address them. But, allow these books to be seeded into the public library with no discretion. I understand libraries have many choices in which books to place on their shelves. So, my question is, why that book? When did, when did the public library become a tool to indoctrinate children and undermine parents? This is a concern I have as a concerned citizen. Thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Sims.
Good evening. My name is Sarah Sims and I'm in District Two. I'm a mother and a teacher and I've had the pleasure of being a Madison resident for nearly a decade. I'm proud of our city and I always boast about the many wonderful qualities that make Madison a place that any young family would want to call home. However, it's been brought to my attention that there has been an increased number of inappropriate books in the library in the children's section. This is problematic because it's vital to protect our little ones' eyes, hearts, and minds. A successful society always puts the safety of their children first and makes their youth their utmost priority. We should be doing everything in our power to shield them in order to maintain that innocence. This fragile innocence is something that they only possess for a short moment of their lives. Let's not cut it any shorter than it has to be. Childhood can and should be the most loving and enriching period of their existence. Therefore, we should not be exposing them to topics and ideologies that steal away that precious, fleeting innocence. I know if you were to poll every parent in Madison, you would find that the vast majority are not in favor of sexualizing their children. I say "parent" because I'm not referring to grassroots organizations, people from out of town, political organizations. Obscene material is detrimental to childhood development, not educational. Please do the right thing and at the very least, move these books to the adult section to allow parents to make that decision for their own children. Again, children should not have unfettered access to graphic sexual content. Let's make the library a safe and fun experience for our children to enjoy. They deserve it and they are counting on you to make that happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Sims. Next, Ashley Singleton.
I'm gonna start by telling you that that printout that you've been handed is for reading ages 14 to 17, so it's not like it's in the picture books.
Did you tell us what district you live in?
Uh, District Seven, sorry. Did I not write? Oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And I also wanna thank you for serving on the library board, Ms. Barton. I appreciate your service. At the last council meeting and tonight, you heard from supporters of library censorship. They may not wanna call it that, but that's what it is. They're representatives of extremist groups, Moms for Liberty, and Clean Up Alabama. I do not believe that any of you plan to introduce policies regarding book banning, but I would like to remind you that those who support bans and censorship under the guise of re-categorizing or removing to the adult section, books are the unhinged vocal minority and have never been on the right side of history. You need only look at Prattville, Gabson, or Fairhope and their current takeovers by these extremist groups to see the community devastation that that slippery slope will lead to. In the event that any citizen has a legitimate complaint with a book in our library, there is a book challenge process already in place without bringing hysterics and politics into it. Please keep your reason and logic and do not give in to these attention-seeking behaviors. In this presentation tonight, in our presentation tonight, you heard how loved and successful our library is. The citizens of Madison ask you to continue to, your support of our library and our hard working librarians. Thank you.
Thank you. The next group of comment cards are all focused on Toyota Field, or mentioned Toyota Field. We're gonna begin with Jonathan Pierce.
I don't know my district number. I'm Jonathan Pierce, but I'm Teddy's district, so that's how I know my district.
Okay, very good.
Alright. When the city creates a contract that allows a contract, does you get out of building the bridges across the interstate? And then, you want us to pay it, pay for it. I call that mismanagement. When you ask us to pay for stadium improvements, Ball Court should be paying their fair share of that. If not, that's poor contracting. We object to the more expensive option. At the very least, since Madison City is bearing the costs associated with these things, the least that Ball Court could do is to make discount tickets available for the residents of Madison who are paying for that. So, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Bebe Ochen.
Bebe Ochen, District Seven. After being at the work session the other day, I really left knowing much less than what I came in and very upset. Talked to people over the, since that time and have a question I would like to ask you all and I would like an answer, maybe not now, but are you afraid that if you do not do this project, that the Ball Court will pull their team out of Madison? Sounds like blackmail. I hope you're not being blackmailed. I cannot believe I'm up here saying this. As long as I've lived here and as long, I don't know, anyway, it's beside the point. I, I wanna know if you're worried about that? If, if in any way, it has been brought to your attention or not to your attention or I would like your feelings on this. And as far as the capital improvements go, I think it's a two-man thing. I don't think the city should be doing these. I can't believe in the original contract, this city would have signed a contract where it says that Madison would be responsible for any capital improvements to that venue. I can't believe you're off, you didn't do it. I say the council. It's not your this council, it was another council, but I can't believe you did that. If you did, they could be bringing things in constantly. I would just like to know how we stand on this. And I would like to know if all the other, the division that the trash pantses are in, if the other venues are being, are building, are going through the same thing we are. I guess that's probably about all I need to know except what's going on? I feel like the public is not getting the lowdown on all this. I cannot believe that we're gonna spend this money after all the 50, 60 million dollars we spent to fix that. Should have been a upright development and it should have been done correctly in the, in the time it did. It, it was, but now they wanna add something else and we're having to spend for it? Ball Court should pay for it. That's what it says in here, in this, one of the things. It says that they will, anything, and if they wanna enhance it, they can, at their expense, they can enhance it. Let them enhance it. And I wanna ask them a question sometime.
Thank you, Ms. Ochen. Susan Pierce.
I live in District Three and I live right behind, right behind, not the ball field, but there are new houses that have been built that back up to my backyard. I can see the ball field from my house. I can hear the ball field. Anytime anybody does anything over there, I hear it at my house. I am not, I didn't want, I didn't want it built to begin with, so that's, maybe I wouldn't have a good opinion anyway, but I didn't want it. And I liked the field that was back there, but I don't feel that in this economic climate, I don't think it's right to add additional expenses to our city budget to pay for anything more in that, in that venue. The Ball Court should be paying for it. We shouldn't have to because it falls on us as residents. And maybe not initially, but you bet you, you're not, we're gonna end up having to pay for it through taxes. And I remember when the last sales tax was increased, we were told that it would be reduced once one of this, one of the elementary schools was built. That hasn't happened. So, I don't want my taxes raised and so, if you build this, that's what's gonna happen. And I'm afraid that the city is gonna go under because of all the money that you're borrowing. You're borrowing a lot of money. If I borrowed that on my own self, we would be going under and I don't want our city to go under. So, think about that. That's a lot of money. And if Ball Court wants it that badly, they can build it. I mean, as Bebe said, is what's gonna happen? Are they gonna pull out? We have a nice facility. I just drove by where the Stars used to play. It's not anywhere near as nice as the facility we have, but think about that before you borrow more money. It's a lot of money to borrow.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. Bernadette Mayer.
Good evening. I'm in District Five and I have to talk fast because I only have three minutes. Okay, number one, on the planning resolutions, I say no to any additional funds that's already contractually obligated. I say that I expect the mayor and city council to do what's best for the city and its citizens, that the team ownership has fiscal responsibilities. Cities should be receiving full amounts from Ball Corp., which has not received in all the previous years, but I guess just in the most recent year. And most of what is proposed is unnecessary and not fully stadium ownership responsibility, inappropriate use of taxpayer under stadium maintenance money, not a cost benefit at all for the city, way too much of Madison City taxpayer funds already has been used for the Toyota Stadium and Town Madison. Okay, now, I'm gonna move on to number two and three of my points. Number two is the structure and funds with Madison Visionary Partners. And I talked about Madison Visionary Partners before, but the funds in and out to and from Madison Visionary Partners bypass municipality regulations. Madison Visionary Partners should not have Madison Chamber of Commerce reporting under them. Madison Chamber of Commerce has its own board and should be reporting directly to the city, city council. This city council and current mayor have had Madison Visionary Partners established and given Madison Visionary Partners its inappropriate authority and power. This is not the first time I am bringing this issue and concerns up to Madison, about Madison Visionary Partners, to this city council and mayor. Okay, my third point is Madison City School Board, that the school board should now be elected and not appointed, which has always been the plan when the school was set up. The schools are well-funded with, with the ad valorem taxes, as will be discussed maybe a little bit later. We're looking for what's the best for the students and the school, and it's best for the city of Madison. Madison City's school board should now move to elect a position besides an administration, both of Madison City and Madison City Schools make that move clearly a step that City of Madison should make. This current city council has made abundantly clear that they want to continue to control who gets on the school board by the current appointment process. It's wrong to have this extreme concentration of city council appointment power. Duties and responsibilities of city business should be enough for the mayor and city council, especially with the need, needs of the planning committee involvement and oversight, which clearly has some way out ideas that are not a good fit for the city of Madison. The planning committee should be proposing things that are best for the city and its citizens and-
Thank you, Ms. Mayer. You're out of time.
I didn't get to number four, but sorry.
Thank you. The next speaker is Michael Sheehy and he has submitted some slides also in advance. He's just trying to shrink the clock so you can see it.
Michael Sheehy, District One. Good evening. I urge you to postpone a vote on either ballpark plan, ballpark plan until critical questions are fully addressed. It is Ball Corp., not the city, that is contractually responsible for complying with Major League Baseball requirements. It is Ball Corp., not the city, that is contractually responsible for new development and capital improvements. Our contract with Ball Car, Ball Corp. clearly and expressly states that Ball Corp. shall perform at its expense all improvements of whatever kind in nature, foreseen and unforeseen. There is no capital improvement provision for the city. The ballpark does not generate positive cash flow for the city. It loses money for us. The city only breaks even on its ballpark investment by pulling from non-ballpark revenue, most specifically close to $2 million in lodging, lodging tax. The graphs I provided show how great everything looks when we use city taxes to cover ballpark costs. The black line is the combined bond debt and the red line is revenue. And the green shows that when we're using lodging taxes, that we're in the green. Next slide, please. If we don't subsidize the ballpark, debt with lodging taxes- If we don't subsidize the ballpark, debt with lodging taxes, oh, thank you, thank you. If we don't subsidize the ballpark debt with lodging taxes, even using the most aggressive revenue projections presented last week, we stand to lose over twenty-three million dollars through the life of the bonds, plus the additional six point eight million sunk costs for a clubhouse. Alabama, Alabama Constitution, Section Ninety-four prevents cities from granting public funds or aid to a private enterprise on the assumption that a project would be beneficial to the commercial interests of the city. In case precedent, Section Ninety-four is violated when the municipality incurs a financial liability without compensation. However, Section Ninety-four is not violated when the entire cost of a project is financed by issuance of bonds payable solely from the income or rentals of the project. And courts have held that as a matter of law, an increase in tax revenue or the creation of tax revenues does not serve a public purpose in compliance with the law. The ballpark will not attain a hundred percent projected events or revenue immediately, if at all. Some projections, including concerts, baseball, softball tournaments, will generate no true additive value. I propose before we proceed further, we impede an attorney general applying of legality as a matter of protection. We should also amend our contractual relationship with Ball Corp. We could lease the facility back to Ball Corp at cost. We could keep all new facility red, uh, related revenue with the city. And we should contractually establish new event minimum performance level from Ball Corp. This is a game of Jeopardy, but not the kind where the city wins a prize. Funding either of these projects would not be an investment. It would be a gift we'd be paying for decades and is very possibly a prohibited gift. Make no mistake about it, we are knowingly and willfully investing public funds and not just risking, but consciously accepting a financial loss solely to benefit and profit a private corporation. This must be a good, safe negotiation. It is inconceivable that Ball Corp won't be a part of this solution. We're purportedly in this together, win or lose. Let's make it a win-win. Thank you.
Thank you. Joey Cece.
Thank you. Joey Cece, District Three, uh, City of Madison and Town Madison. Uh, I just wanted to kind of come today just to, going to give you a little bit of an update on what is happening at Town Madison and a little bit that it applies to your, uh, debate over the, uh, addition to the stadium. Uh, tonight, Town Madison is home to nineteen restaurants that are open. You can get everything from a hamburger to a chicken sandwich, to a pliable, to a pokey bowl, uh, to a salad, a cocktail, or a steak. So we're trying to cover all the, the bases that we can there. And we've got five more restaurants that are coming. These are either under construction or, uh, plans have been submitted to the city to, to be under construction soon. Uh, those include, uh, Steam Boys, Chicken Salad Chick, a Lola's Mexican, and a Walk On. So all of those are currently either under construction, will be open soon. So that's, uh, twenty-four restaurants there at the, at Town Madison. Uh, kind of more importantly for tonight's discussion is kind of hotel rooms. We're currently home to three hotels and roughly about three hundred hotel rooms, all of which are paying the increased lodging tax, uh, that was originally put on the, uh, the hotel rooms in the City of Madison to pay for the, uh, the venue, uh, bond debt service. When the city did the deal at beginning with the stadium, they were very much, uh, uh, it was the mayor and the council uh, is concerned that the, the money generated from the stadium, in addition to the lodging tax, would pay for the bond payments for the ballpark. That, according to the mayor at the last, uh, uh, work session, has happened and it is, and is actually over and above what the bond payment is, which gives you money to put towards the maintenance. My kind of update for you tonight is the fact that the addition to the three hundred hotel rooms that we have currently paying that tax, there are four hundred hotel rooms that are currently under construction today that will be open within the next nine months. And all of that sales tax revenue and the lodging tax revenue from those four hundred hotel rooms is not even included in the, the good number that you heard about at the work session, uh, most recently. Uh, we're also, uh, getting ready to break ground on another hundred hotel rooms, which is the Town Place Suites, which will be on the west end, uh, close to, uh, the Twice Daily, that's not included in those four hundred numbers. So, uh, that's five hundred hotel rooms that are not proposed or not may come, but definitely are coming. Uh, again, four hundred of which are under construction now, a hundred of which, which will be under construction soon. So I just think the city has done a fantastic job in protecting your investments. Uh, I think that any number that we've seen from the stadium and the projections at Town Madison have all been conservative, and everything that's been done has delivered up and above those, uh, conservative estimates. I think that the estimates that, uh, Rush, uh, gave you at the, uh, at the work session are conservative as well. And I have every expectation that, uh, that, uh, with this addition at Town Madison and the addition, uh, to the stadium, that we will overperform all of those numbers that were given to you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cece. That concludes our comment cards that were submitted in advance. Is there anyone else here who would like to address the council? Please come forward. State your, please, come on. Say your name and district.
Hello, my, my name's Gregory Williams. I'm District Four, Gray Shaw. Um, I was hoping more residents of the Cedar Springs Station Homeowners Association would join us to talk about the project you have. I think it's Resolution One Fifteen. In March of two thousand twenty-three, you, you had a consulting firm look at access from County Line Road to the Bradford, uh, Greenway on Mill, along Mill Road. We're seeking, uh, to understand where you are with that project. Not only do we have safety issues for residents from Cedar Springs Station, of which I'm the president, uh, accessing the, the elementary school and the high school. There are other safety concerns and, and, and as, as you all may know, as you cross, uh, Fox Hollow from the other subdivision down to County Line. Basically, we're trying to understand, it's been about a year, what the city council and the finance, uh, board or whatever it's called, and engineering will do about making a decision on access either the north side of Mill Road or the south side, or the mid, uh, area crossway. In other words, from Cedar Springs Station on the south side, you get the Fox Hollow, and then you cross over on the north side and down to the Greenway. We just like a decision, not only, again, the parents, uh, trying, would love to have an opportunity to walk their kids to school. We're, we're a twenty-five-year-old subdivision with limited access, walking access to many areas. And we'd like to get your understanding of that, okay? Please, uh, if you can, uh, Greg knows how to get in touch with me, but I'll get in touch with him or read the notes and let us know as a community what, what your plans are. We really appreciate that.
We'll get you some info for sure.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Sure, just raise your hand so we can, thank you.
I just want you to know, we're very concerned about it, and we plan to come. We may not have broad issues like the other residents and community members, but it does concern us.
Sure, and, and I'll, I'll be sure to pass it along to a council member. He, his father-in-law passed away this aft, and he had a funeral this afternoon, so that's why he cannot be here tonight. That's okay. I, I will pass that along to him. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
Jennifer Coe, Ashley Stiggs, District Five, Council President. Okay, back to the, uh, Toyota Field expansion. Uh, regarding the stadium and clubhouse and suites, uh, Resolution Twenty Twenty Four One Hundred R and, and Oh Ninety Three R, authorizing an amendment to an existing Twenty Twenty Three agreement that we had, um, previously, I respectfully request that the council not amend the agreement at all. Uh, the new agreement is using the maintenance fund for new construction instead of for maintenance. I respect that each council member brings different professional experience from their business or occupation, and then, you know, uses that to base their decision. They exercise their best judgment based on the facts presented to them when they decide how to vote. So I can understand that they might support an economic development project that benefits maybe the shareholders of Ball Corp, probably more so than the average taxpayer here. I would, uh, I'd like to respectfully ask that the council try to consider that this project, most especially the grander multi-story suites with the twenty-two million bond investment isn't really a reasonable request from the Major League Baseball or the, uh, shareholders, whoever wants this. It's just, uh, not, it's not ethical, in my opinion, to ask the taxpayers fondness. That's my opinion based on the numbers and the projections presented at the work session, especially considering that Ball Corporation is not under, um, any contractual obligation to stay here in Madison, whether we build the clubhouse or the suites building or not. Uh, when they're done doing whatever it is they're doing, they will move on, and that's just the way it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Coe. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council?
My name is Beck Mitchell. I'm in District Four. I live in, uh, Cedar Springs Station. I just wanted to echo what Greg said. I know, um, back in twenty nineteen, I believe there was funding set aside for that, uh, sidewalk, but due to COVID, everything got messed up, obviously. Um, but as someone who probably runs more on the roads in Madison, most people drive, uh, every month, um, it is a very dangerous spot, uh, with the hill coming. Uh, if you're coming westbound on Mill towards County Line, it's a blind hill to, to get over. Um, so just any kind of help to get that sidewalk done to, uh, prevent kids, you know, getting hurt. Uh, I go running with my children. Uh, I see plenty of people out there walking and, and on the side of County Line, or, uh, sorry, side, side of Mill Road, uh, heading towards County Line or the Greenway. It's just a very dangerous spot, so I just wanted to kind of reiterate what, uh, Greg said. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. Is there anyone else?
Yes, I'm Robert Breakfield, also District Four, also representing Cedar Springs Station. Again, I just echo that same thing. My wife's been confronted by the police, actually, a couple times as she, uh, crosses the road over and tries to either use the turn lane there in front of our neighborhood to get to Fox Hollow where there is access to that Greenway, or going on, uh, as we go to DQ for the kids, um, uh, down there, going on even, you know, both of those shoulders are just dangerous. And again, since that's something we moved in, we kind of heard that was coming in the five-year plan, and we thought that'd be great. And now that our kids are approaching school age, and we'd like to walk them to school eventually, and we are avid bikers and runners as well, and would like to see that done at all possible. Um, and just, we'd like to just echo that same sentiment, so. Uh, in particular, we actually border the, the, we actually back up to Mill Road, so that all possible. We do like the original plans for it to be north, obviously. There have been trees, and the trees we have there have been hit by cars, uh, on Mill Road because we were downhill of that. Um, and so if it were to be on the south, we'd, we'd respectfully request the engineering, if at all possible, still allow trees to remain there for defense of our home, if possible, of course. But as runners and people wanting safety for the neighborhood and ourselves, we understand wherever it can best be put makes the most sense. We would support that.
Thank you, Mr. Breakfield.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Being known, we will close public comments and move to the consent agenda and finance committee report.
Yes, the finance committee met this morning and reviewed the regular and periodic bills. Um, we also have a resolution, um, authorizing the mayor to, uh, enter into an agreement with the Board of Education for transportation services for the Police Department Kids Camp and, um, uh, declaring, uh, a duty weapon and badge as surplus and authorizing it to be given to the officer upon her retirement. Madison Senior Center donation of thirty dollars from L. Tucker. We also discussed at the, um, finance committee that the, um, community center, after we do our approvals tonight, will only have, um, forty-seven thousand dollars left in their account, in that account for that project. And there's about three million dollars left to be done on that project. We also have, um, borrowed money from the Highway Seventy Two Fund to the team of about three hundred thousand dollars. So, um, since that was discussed, I just wanted to catch y'all up to date on that. And with that, I will move to approve.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to address, uh, just really recognize Stacy Thomas. Uh, she's the officer that's retiring. She's been our mental health officer for, uh, several, several years. She's actually started that division, and, uh, it's been, it's been a great, great thing, uh, just in policing and a good example of how you do that before, you know, we go out and there's, there's someone that may have some, some mental illness, and they get arrested and they go to jail, and, and, you know, that's the way we dealt with it now. Um, she gets in contact with them, finds out what their needs are, and, and there's other, other options, so, um, actually, her retired, but she, she is going to come on, I think, as a consultant. I'll let you talk about that if you'd like.
Yeah, I was just going to say, to me, it's a real success story with someone who'd been here, um, I want to say seventeen, eighteen, nineteen years. But during her time here, used the city's program to go through the master's program in counseling. Um, she'll retire with that degree and had, was going to start her own business anyway, but already has rapport with our, our public safety folks. And so I think for her to come back, and again, under a contract, we'll see how it works. But she already has, uh, a, a great start with our team, but again, use the city system, and now the city gets to use that back, I think, is really positive.
Okay, we have a motion and a second ready for vote.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
And motion, Powell. Next, we have presentation of reports, beginning with Mayor Finley.
Do we need to vote on both those resolutions?
Which ones?
The second one for Stacy. Do we need to vote on that?
No, it's a consent agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Move for the consent agenda. Okay.
Thank you.
Ready?
Now me? Now me?
Now you.
All right. Well, I'm just getting back from one of the, uh, meetings we have, and it's the, the ten mayors. Uh, they get together. We're in Birmingham. And so there, there's interesting, get a lot of information, but a couple of things that the, the public could ask us about, I, I just will be able to use that, uh, to give them information. I was trying to catch Ms. Bebe, because I wanted to start with her. And the answer to her question is emphatically absolutely not. We have not been blackmailed by Ball Corp's or the Trash Pandas at all. They've given us options. Um, the, the person who in essence has given us an unfunded mandate is Major League Baseball. Major League Baseball, you, has the field, the, the, the stadium, which we own, which meets, needs to meet requirements. I think Mary Beth and Garrett and those two have worked, I mean, with their teams together to get it to where this is all we have to do. You know, our stadium took care of a lot of what needed to be done. Um, to answer a couple of the questions that Ms. Bebe had, um, Knoxville is building a new stadium. Uh, is Chattanooga also building a new stadium, both in the seventy, eighty million dollar range, maybe more, yeah, maybe more than that to be compliant. Um, others are, are doing that same thing. So yes, um, Major League Baseball purchased Minor League Baseball. I had never thought about it, but one of the things they're trying to do, especially with the visitors clubhouse, they want players to come out of college into the professional and get into Major League Baseball. They're competing against colleges. And the colleges' facilities are phenomenal. So it is something that, you know, goes back to our longer-range product is better with that. And so these guys have been great partners. As a matter of fact, I went to one of the Birmingham Barons game yesterday. Uh, it's not like I cheated on you guys because I did wear my Trash Panda gear there. Um, a couple of things that I saw immediately. Um, our, our team that's managing our stadium is incredible. The, the Trash Panda team, um, in between what they do on the innings, um, what they do from a staffing standpoint, the number of people that they have in that venue managing those games and the parking. Um, and I'll go to other things. All the events that they are doing, and I think they'll talk a little bit more about what's coming or what they could do, but the, the events we have are for our community. See, I have not only the baseball games, you have multi, non-baseball events, and they do it better than anybody. And then Roger will tell you, our payments are on time. They meet the payments. When they're due, they, they're here. So from a tenant's standpoint, they're doing a phenomenal job there. I thought I'd give council a couple of, um, well, let me go back to, to answering these. Um, so those were Bebe's. Um, Ms., Ms. Pierce, you asked about the half cent, um, or you mentioned the half cent. The half cent went in place in twenty-ten, and that was to pay for doing James Clemens High School. It was a thirty-six million dollar interest-free loan that we received from the Obama administration. Um, we're paying it back over a seventeen-year period. The schools are actually paying that, but the city implemented a half cent at that time. Seventeen years from two thousand and ten, twenty-seventeen would be the first time that it could possibly sunset, so it's in place until that time. Twenty-twenty-seven, I'm sorry, twenty-twenty-seven, um, is, is the first time that it, it could sunset. Um, but that's what that went in, in, in for, was a thirty-six million dollar interest-free loan. And by the time they do some sort of sinking fund, which I was a marketing major, means we pay about thirty million dollars. So it was a really good deal to get that. Um, Ms. Mayer, the one thing I do, want to make sure, the, um, MVP, the, the chamber does not sit up underneath the MVP. They are autonomous organizations, so I just want to make sure that you got that, that squared away. MVP is in position to support our city with projects that are beneficial to the city, either that the city would like or individuals could in turn come talk about. I had somebody that came and used my two hours every two weeks to talk about a fat situation she had with her daughter, her youngest daughter, who was being bullied. And she is a mother just heartbroken, working with our school system, doing everything they could that way. But to, to channel her pain, she's written five books on positivity within our community and within people supporting each other. And so she's looking to do festival. So that's one of the things, when she came to see me, and she said, I want to create a positive thing in the city of Madison, I'm not quite sure how to go about it. One of the things, people give me money, but they're talking about sometimes I got to start my own 501(c)(3). No, you don't. There's one in place that you can use as an umbrella organization to do something good for our community that supports us. So I hear you many times, not quite understanding what that does for us. I understand you don't like it, but we love it for what it does to help our community. Mike, Mr. Sheehy talked about the subsidization of lodging tax. I don't consider it that. I consider it an incredibly good plan that the previous council put in place, knowing what was already there, and then working with the Trash Pandas on how we could create non-baseball events. And so knowing that more hotels were going to come, you know, right now, again, the stadium bond payment is $3.1 million as it sits right now. Last year, between the Trash Panda channel and the lodging tax that directly go towards that, we, we generated $3.6 million. So a $500,000 delta, and a lot of that goes, then we have money for facility maintenance. You know, I thought the one thing about it is when, when, when Joe Davis went to it at the end, and when it was at the very last five or six years, they weren't putting money back into it. And that's, again, why they lost their baseball team. They didn't have local ownership either. One thing that Roger helped me remember, they were still there 29 years. With the group, the last 10 years, it wasn't even participatory, and what these guys are doing is phenomenal on that. One last thing. At this meeting, I learned a couple of things. Hoover is doing an $18 million upgrade to the family center right now. So while it's a great facility, they're doing an $18 million upgrade just to keep it new and fresh. Mobile is building a $300 million, basically what I would consider like a VBC for concerts, basketball, and that kind of thing. Dalton is spending about $45 million on a City Hall complex. It's redoes their City Hall and some other things within the city. Tuscaloosa is spending $100 million on a sewer line, so they can get more houses into their community. Talk about managing growth. And Hoover did a 50-50 interchange deal with the state of Alabama to get a new interchange off of 459. It's $120 million right now, and they haven't even built it yet, deal, of which they're paying 50%. So when I hear all of these things that cause our, our city angst, first, Roger will tell you from a, from a city standpoint, Connie is our finance chair, we've never been in better position, but we've never had more need. No question about it. And so I think I'm really proud of, of what's been done, and we get to the point, and then we'll make a good decision together on that. Two other things. One, our Madison Chamber of Commerce held the Best in Business Awards last Friday night. I thought it was one of the classiest, best-run events that we've been to, and I'm really proud, I don't even know, how many businesses did they recognize that made the finalists? 120 or something like that?
It was a lot.
Yeah, and, and then had, you know, 11 categories, big businesses, small businesses, starter businesses, and they're doing a great job of promoting the city, and then giving those businesses, you know, a, a viewpoint from others where they in turn can, can do things together. And then I'm going to go back to the Trash Pandas. We had a first, a first week there, we're here, it's kind of rainy. This next week is supposed to be really nice weather throughout the week. It starts tomorrow night, it goes all the way through Sunday. If you haven't been to your first Trash Panda game this year, this would be a great week to go. I know that's a lot, but I had lots to say.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, I wasn't sure you were going to mention Best in Business Awards, and just want to give a shout out to Michelle Epling, the Executive Director of the Chamber, and her staff for just a fabulous event. It was a sold-out event, I think there were over 500 people there. Thank you for the ride. Want to give a special shout out to Madison Street Festival that won the ultimate award, the gold award, that Karen will probably talk about as well. But it was just a great way to recognize the people and the companies that have invested in our city. And just, again, thank you to the Chamber, fabulous event. And do want to give a plug for this Saturday. I think the mayor has an opportunity to vote on the Asbury Car Show. I'm mentioning it because Ron is cooking 1,000 hot dogs, and if you all don't come, we're going to be eating hot dogs for a week, which we did last year when it rained a little bit. So please come out, Asbury Church, nine to one, huge community event. There's a special for the mayor to have his pick, and weather looks great, and so would invite everyone to come and take at least three or four hot dogs. So that's all I have.
Okay, District Two.
Okay, well, I just want to point out that I'm the Chamber liaison, y'all stole my thunder here. The Best in Business Awards were fabulous. They knocked it out of the park. We recognize so many wonderful businesses in our community, and I'm so proud. I did want to reiterate that I am on the Chamber board as an ex-FFC member, and we do not fall underneath MVP. We're two separate organizations. And I will mention that the last meeting Paul and I missed because we were with the Huntsville Madison County Chamber in DC, where we met with our, our legislators up there, and we, it was a phenomenal trip, and we learned a lot about what's coming up, what their concerns are, and we also shared what our concerns are for our community and asked for help in many different areas. But that's all.
You want to pass your resolution?
Oh, sorry.
Roger probably would appreciate if you could do that.
I read my notes, but I didn't read the printed thing, sorry.
Next time, we won't take your thunder for the Chamber, we promise.
Don't make me frustrated. Anyway, okay, so I would also like to propose that, or move to approve the amended and revised annual operating budget, also known as the mid-year budget, for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30, 2024.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. Are there any questions or any discussions?
Yes, I do have some questions. First one pertains to our community center. Okay, I was shocked to hear that we are $3 million behind and...
We're not $3 million behind. We have $3 million left till the, the project is completed.
And where will the funding for that come from?
Right now, like we had talked about, we have three mil, so I guess we'll go back a step. So part of the money that we don't have yet is the money that is, is or will be raised by Madison Visionary Partners, and/or we're still waiting for one of the checks to come from the county. So if we need to continue to finalize the project of which there's about $3 million left, we can pull money from the Highway 72 stash that we have, that's got $3 million plus sitting in it, that we then will replenish with the money that we get back over the next two to three years, and that's how they work on some of their pledges. So we have a good game plan to finish it, and then a good game plan to replenish it.
Second question has to do, again, with the community center. I looked through it, and I, and I did, I did ask Connie about the staffing for the, from the rec to staff the community center. And if you could just clarify that for the people exactly, how that money is coming out and what positions are being filled.
The staffing is included in the budget, and has been included in the budget under parking recs.
Right, because you just detail, because it's a whole new thing, and I understand that there's going to be a lot of different craftings going on and that sort of thing. So all those different opportunities are covered in this budget, in the midterm budget?
Yes.
Yeah, so in the mid-year budget, between what we have for the senior center staff and the Mars van drivers, and then what we have with recreation, those two will combine to initially support the staffing of the community center. And then as they build out programs, they'll look to add people, probably in next year's budget. And then our HR department is already working to bring you guys something in the next month on one of the pieces that we need for the staffing plan to bump a couple, a couple people up to program director so they can start setting that kind of stuff up. So we've got a really good game plan that will be, we're already, the staffing is prepared, and then we're going to bring you something in about a month that gives us three more people at kind of a more management level.
Okay. Because I knew we were opening in August, and just wondered where are we stood on all of that.
Absolutely, good question.
Thank you. Also, I have a question concerning the, the Wellness Center. Now, when we voted to approve it, it was going to be open to the general public. And when I contacted Ms. Spears to ask, is this true, is this coming forward, I was disappointed to hear that it's not going to be open to the public, no. So can somebody please explain why that's not happening?
That is, it's not open to the public at this time. That, that, I did not say that it would never be open to the public. But Paul, do you want to answer that, or do you want to?
Oh, no, I'm having fun with this, no, I'm, it's, it is not open to the public at this time, although with just the weight rooms. Everything else is being used. The public and people are using the volleyball courts. Again, part of what we're looking to do is set up the aerobic classes, they're using the pickleball courts, they're using the outside stuff. And it's just simply, we are still in process of trying to figure out how to find and what to do now that we've got more than just one center that can be utilized. So you've got the Wellness Center, you've got the Community Center, you've got Dublin, and I think it's more, it's, it's larger than just throwing something out there and just use it anytime you want to. So we're working on a bigger plan, and we're just not there yet with getting the Wellness Center fully open. One last thing is with the equipment that we have in there, they will take some of the equipment to the, the Community Center on what they can use, that can be used with some of the seniors that will use that. And then we're trying to figure out what to do with the big room and the smaller, where the cardio room is, do we set up another meeting room over there? Do we move everything over to one side? So we still have some issues, and I say issues, to figure out to maximize the asset that the community has, and it just hasn't moved as fast as we want it to.
Okay, fair enough, but I did see that there was registration available for the employees, and that's all started. So it's just a matter of time before we bring on everyone else.
It is, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion on the mid-year budget? I think we're ready for a vote.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Is that it, Connie?
That's all.
Thank you. District Three.
I'd just like to mention I'd like it better when you're out of town because you don't really talk as much.
I talked when I watched you, you just couldn't hear me.
Yeah, I did think about me, that's okay. I've had things said about me. Just real quick, I, I want to address two things, and one I'll address a little bit further down as we start getting into some resolutions. First of all, the library, I think everybody needs to kind of understand what our role is. We appoint one person to be on the board, that's what we do, okay? That's it. We don't, we don't put books on shelves, we don't, you know, go take books off shelves, we, we don't do that. That's not our role. Our role is to appoint one person. That's, that's our role. And I am, this is personal, I am, you know, whether I like those books or not, is, it doesn't matter. But I don't think it's government's job to be in everybody's business about everything. But with that said, it is the library's job to be apolitical. When I walk in the library and there are books there that, or less leaning, or right-leaning, or whatever, you should have the same exact book of the opposite opinion. That's what our country is built on, is to have, you know, opposite opinions and to be able to educate ourselves. I, I can see you, and I, and that's fine, you can, you can judge me the way you want to. I'm not running for political office, okay? I'm telling you the way things should be, right? We should be able to educate our kids the way we want to, you should be able to educate your kids the way you want to, they should be able to educate their kids they want to, and, and, and that's, and that's fine. But when we're in a public...
Order in the chambers, or you're going to be removed?
I'm speaking.
He's got the floor.
When, when we're, we're in a public place, the library is a public place, and we need to make sure that our children are protected, okay? There's no reason I should walk in and see some of this stuff that I've seen brought to me, none, period. I mean, the stuff that we're seeing is just, is just outrageous, and it's in our schools. But with that said, all of the people that came to the library, okay, it's a success story. Where I grew up, we didn't have that kind of library. I mean, we didn't, you know, we, we didn't have access to books, so I'm grateful for this. And I can promise you, the stuff that is online is a lot worse than the stuff that's in the library. But just, just so everybody knows, our job is not to regulate the library. Our job is to appoint one person, and that's, that's all we can do. We don't have access over the library. But you guys can come and speak, I want to hear you speak, I want to hear both sides, but we're limited in what we can do. The second thing is, is the ball corp thing. You know, it's been a success story, we've had some successes. Before it was out there, it was a piece of dirt, plain and simple, no opportunities. It's, it's dirt that didn't have debt and it didn't have income. Now it's dirt that has debt, it's paying, you know, it's being paid by the income it makes, and it's positive. You know, we, we have the numbers. When I look at these things, I look at them in a very organic fashion. Is it going to make money, is it not? Is it going to provide for our citizens, is it not? And, you know, the one thing about providing for our citizens is, if we put a red light out here, we get zero income. We put a road, we get zero income. So we have to generate money in a couple of different ways. Either we tax people, which I'm not for, I don't want taxes, or we have to generate it by borrowing money. I'm not a fan of that either. Or we have to generate something that generates money. This has done that, and it's paid for things. Some of the things it's paid for are some of the things that we didn't borrow money on. I've been on the Finance Committee the entire time. I can tell you, we are a very conservative group. We don't spend money where we don't have to. Our department heads do a great job, and we run a city efficiently. I've been to other cities, you know, I've seen the roads, I know what they look like. So, you know, just, just keep in mind, when we look at things, we look at them conservatively, we take the numbers, I do anyway, I won't speak for everybody else, we look at those numbers, if it's a deal, it's a good deal, you do it. Never will I vote on something because I'm running for office. I will vote if it's something good for Madison, period. I'm not concerned about Ball Corp, I'm not concerned about any corp, I'm not concerned about, you know, any opinion of getting me voted or not voted. I'm concerned about the citizens of Madison. I made a promise when I got voted in, that I'd do the best job I could with the information I have, and that's what I will continue to do. That's all we've got.
Thank you. I have Resolution Number 2024-114R, authorizing the archiving of the April 17, 2024 City Council Work Session. I'd like to move to approve.
Second.
Okay, motion and second by Denzine. Any discussion? Ready for a vote.
Councilmember Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Roblesky.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
You voted aye.
I voted aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Seifert.
Aye.
And the motion passes, thank you. District Six.
All right, well, first I'd like to thank the Beautification Board, and especially Karen. He put together a wonderful spring cleanup, all on his own. He just decided we needed to work on it. He ended up getting, he had eight opportunities, they had over 60 volunteers that showed up. We did 40 bags of litter, keep them, all of them are beautiful. They supplied and contributed $3,000 worth of supplies. So we had safety vests, and we had grabber sticks, and buckets, buckets and trash cans. This last Saturday, we were over at Columbia Elementary, and we were walking along the roads there, and it's a great bunch, mostly, actually, completely, that Bob Jones High School students that have come out to work. And it's just been wonderful to watch them get involved with the community, and I thought that was great. So, um, kudos to everybody on the Beautification Board in putting that all together for us. The second thing is, yeah, the wonderful, the wonderful surprise that the Madison Street Festival got by winning both Best Nonprofit and Gold at the Chamber the other night. We were so excited. We, we were not expecting that at all. But it's a culmination of years and years of work by so many wonderful people. Excuse me, there's so many, thirty, that meet once a month, preparing for this one day event. It's a lot of work that goes into it. And this was just recognition, recognition of all the hard work that all of the wonderful people in Madison have done. And that's what makes this so special. And I sent out a thank you notes right away to our Police Department, our Fire Department, and the Public Works. Because without their support, we could have never done this. And it was just wonderful to be recognized for that. So I want to say a huge congratulations to everyone that works in the Madison Street Festival, and thank you for all your hard work. And that is all I have for now. District seven.
Yeah, I got a few things. First, I want to thank Tracy Gillespie for, we had this past Thursday our Civic Awareness Academy for Parks and Rec. And she put together a very good agenda, very good presentation. And Corey and his staff as well came and supported that. Very good session, very engaging, and a lot of good, a lot of good dialogue. So I appreciate the opportunity to attend and follow your leadership. So thank you. Next thing I'm, I'll, I'll bring up is, is the library. And I will, for one, admit my ignorance. I will tell you, I get cold sweats when I go in the library. I did not frequent the library in Auburn. And I, me and Dewey Decimal just don't get along. So, but, you know, I will, in, in some ways, it's a stomp, I think, what Teddy said. I mean, I'll for one, be honest with you, I don't want that crap in my house. My son better not be reading it. But I'll also tell you, my son, even fifteen years old, is not going to be going there by himself. I would be going with him, cold sweats and all. And so I take that on as my responsibility as his father, that, you know, I do the best I can to protect what he hears, what he sees, and what he speaks. Now, just like me, he sins. He doesn't do thing, does thing, or whatever the phrase is. He doesn't do things correctly. He probably don't speak correctly either. But that's my responsibility. That's what God has given me as my edict to raise him into a God-fearing, hopefully contributing member of society. Because at some point, he's getting out of the house. I will also say, there is a process for removal. I would encourage, if we haven't done that, to do that. If that poses an issue, or there are, you know, once that is done and things don't happen, then let's, at that point, work to resolve that. And if we can't get to that point, then that is a problem. So, you know, from that standpoint, do that. I will also say, and this is just my opinion, this is John Seaford's opinion, not as a member of this council, but just as John Q. citizen, if you're worried about books, and I'm all hundred percent on books, just wait till they get to the internet. And the online and everything that's on there, and the little iPhones, and the apps, and the Snapchat, this, and the, even YouTube, even in the schools, with all the filters that they have, my wife is a second grade teacher, or was. It is unreal, all of a sudden, what'll pop up in our school systems, filtering. It is unreal. Unstinking real, with the amount of filters and restrictions that they have on there, what'll pop up? So, you know, again, I'm ignorant on exactly what is and what is not in the library. You probably will not see me frequenting the library because I just, like I say, I get cold sweats. Last thing I'm going to address is, I'm in the Toyota field, and I do want to, I'll, I know Paul addressed Ms. Debbie's question. I know she's probably at home listening to us right now, and I will go by and visit her sometime. But I will say from my, and just to be honest, yeah, I'm afraid. Am I being blackmailed? No. But I'm afraid because I actually, when I was a member of Connect as part of Leadership Huntsville Madison County, I did a trade study and an analysis on the Joe Davis Stadium and why that team left. And I know from talking with the general manager then, and doing that case study and analysis behind it, the fact that the city did not support the stadium, and the team did not support the city, drove a wedge between the two, and they left. And so, yeah, I'm afraid if we don't meet, Major League Baseball, who, by the way, bought Minor League Baseball. It is what it is. They decide what the requirements are. We have to meet those minimum requirements. And at some point, if we do not, that is not a viable product for them to put something in to, to, to show their product. That's it. Paul's correct as well. They're competing with colleges. I just did a quick Google search. And sorry, I'm an Auburn fan, but I have to say some of these other schools. But just, let's talk SEC, which is about as close to minor and Major League Baseball as you're going to get. Georgia, Tennessee, Auburn, Ole Miss, and Texas A&amp;M, at least within a twenty-second search, are all doing tens of millions of dollars of renovation on their baseball stadiums now. They're doing it. There's a reason why they're doing it. They're not doing it because it loses money. At the same time, go back to the origin. I was on council. I was a supporter of the baseball stadium. We call it multi-use venue. We use it for other things. But at the end of the day, I mean, it looks, it smells, it tastes, it sounds like a baseball stadium. We planned it to, at worst case, break even. Mr. Sheehy, you are a hundred percent correct. Without those lodging taxes, it doesn't work. That's the reason why we planned it that way. There's a reason why we earmarked those funds in Town Madison and then new venues that came along. And I don't remember the exact details. I'm not going to get exact. But that's why we earmarked those funds, was to be that kind of a backstop. And to Paul's point, this year we netted five hundred thousand. I mean, that kind of sounds like a right decision at this point. Future will tell. I will also say, from what I did see at the work session, I do want to see, from Rush, a more, in my opinion, realistic business case analysis. I like what I saw. I mean, I love his net present value and what, you know, what does that mean in today? But there are a lot of things not included in that. There are a lot of things that made that really, really conservative. We didn't include revenue from Town Madison. We didn't include, I think, some of these new hotels coming as part of what could go towards that. Are there things that we wouldn't if we went that route? I'm not saying we do. I'm not saying I support it. But how would we go about paying for that? We did that same thing when we sat here, about fifty or fifty-three million for the current stadium. How do we go about paying for that? Not necessarily, hey, I don't support it, or hey, I support it. It's, hey, what's the business case? How can we go about paying for it? What are the options there? And I will say as well, with ball court representation here, you guys need to be a part of that conversation. I would welcome you to be a part of that conversation as a stakeholder. Because if it's beneficial for the city, it's also beneficial for you guys. And if it's beneficial for y'all, it's beneficial for us. So that's, I think, as Mr. Sheehy says, figure out how to make it a win-win. Because we want y'all to be successful. Because if you're not, we're all going down a crapper. So that's my opinion. That's my two cents. And it's probably worth less than that. But that's all I have to say.
Thank you, John. We do not have any board or committee appointments or public hearings this evening. So we will go to the department reports, beginning with the city clerk.
Good evening. It's time again for us to authorize our counties, Madison and Limestone, to continue collecting ad valorem tax. I bring before you resolution number 2024-108R, authorizing the continuing leveling, leveling of ad valorem taxes in the city of Madison at the existing rates.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? Ready for a vote.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Legal Engineering.
Okay. I have a few items tonight. First is resolution number 2024-105R, authorizing amendment number two to the Professional Services Agreement with Goodwood Mills K. Wood LLC for project number 22036. That's the Burgreen Huntsville Browns Ferry Roundabout for bid phase services, twelve hundred dollars to be paid from the engineering budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Spears, second by Powell. Any questions? Ready for a vote.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, I have resolution number 2024-107R, authorizing amendment number one to Professional Services Agreement with Summers Consulting Services for project number 24008, timing on County Line Road to include supplemental early morning counts, three hundred dollars to be paid from the engineering budget.
Move to approve. Second. Okay, motion second. Any questions? Ready for a vote.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Next, I have resolution number 2024-109R, authorizing an agreement with Nivens and Associates Appraisals to perform the appraisal of a property for project 23021, Kaiser Boulevard Greenway, not to exceed eighteen hundred dollars to be paid from the engineering department budget.
Move to approve. Second. Okay, motion second. Any questions? Ready for a vote.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. And next, I have resolution number 2024-116R, authorizing purchase of property from SWR Holdings LLC for right-of-way easements to the city for Browns Ferry Road, Huntsville Browns Ferry Road, Burgreen Roundabout, one hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred and twelve dollars to be paid from the engineering budget.
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay. Motion, second by Robleski. Any questions?
Just, do you have a timeframe for that and how it's coordinating with school?
How it's coordinating with school?
Right, with the school traffic. Like, do you have a start date on that, or in your crystal ball?
Well, we're working on right-of-way right now. This is the first of four, really five tracks that we've got to acquire right-of-way easements for. Once we get that, we can schedule the utility relocate. We're going to try to start, we're going to try to bid it soon. Then they'll go through some procurement. Hopefully, we're starting this summer. I mean, the goal is to start this summer.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, ready for a vote.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Finally, I have resolution number 2024-120R, authorizing a professional services agreement with G-Tech LLC to evaluate the vertical bearing and lateral cohesion of the foundation soils on project 23018 Sunshine Oaks, not to exceed fifteen hundred dollars to be paid from Fund 38.
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, motion second. Any questions?
I'd like to hear you just explain to the public what vertical bearing and lateral cohesion of the foundation soils is. That what, is that how good the ground holds itself together?
Right. Broadly, we're making sure that we're going to build the correct type of footing for the, for the pavilions that we're building out there.
Got you. That's some, that's some engineering, eh, you know.
That's right. It's more of a geotech thing. I think it's in the report.
I was just trying to show off.
Yeah, right. He wants us to be here longer, I think.
He's not your kind of engineer.
I think we're ready for a vote.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
And the motion passes. Michael, do you have any knowledge about the Cedar Springs plant on the sidewalk, or can you look that up? I know you were kind of probably caught by surprise tonight, but could you let Councilmember Shaw know so he could respond to?
I can give you a little bit of information right now.
Okay.
Last, so last year, it was approved to look into some feasibility studies, possibilities of some alignments over there on the north side and the south side of Mill Road to connect from County Line to the Bradford, Bradford Creek Greenway, excuse me. What we came back with was an estimate for the north side to be about one point six million, and on the south side to be about one point two million. And that would include a, kind of a mid-block crossing, right at the, I guess it's the easternmost edge of Cedar Springs Station to get across Mill Road, and then run along the north side over there. So that's where we're at on it. There's several different options. You know, we can build this part, or this part, or both of these, or whatever. I've, I've sent all that to Greg Shaw, but I can send it to him again.
Okay. Could you send me a copy of that, too, please? Is this something that we need to dedicate funding for?
Right. There's no, there's no further funding to finish the design or to construct. So all, all we did was basically a conceptual plan. So they did a survey. So we got a survey done. They've located utilities. And they basically said, what would it take broadly to build these different sections of it? Where can it go? What kind of retaining walls? That's the biggest cost is the retaining walls that would be necessary, particularly on the north side. And any kind of drainage improvements have to be done? If we have to pipe a ditch or add curb and gutter, that kind of thing.
Okay, so to get this funded, it would, what, not come up till the next budget cycle, or?
I would say at a minimum, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
We gotta, we gotta finish the design first, too. And then we can sharpen our pencil on what the estimates would be.
Could I be included in that? Because District One is going to be that Huntington Chase area in the new 2025 election.
I'll send it to everybody.
There you go. Excellent.
All right, thank you.
Okay, anything?
Facilities and grounds?
Thank you, Michael.
Still, these grounds has one item for your consideration, resolution 2024-110R, award of a bid, 2024-005ITB for public safety annex building. This is select demo to HRS Services LLC for a hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars to be paid out of Fund 38.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions?
I would just say, as he has gone to get this bid and then worked on air conditioners, you're continuing to keep track of numbers that keep us within the span of what we collectively, you guys collectively, approve. So the good news with this is it is on pace with what we need to get the building done for what we have in it right now.
That's correct.
Will any of our ARPA funding be used for this?
Uh, yeah, we probably would.
So don't we have to designate that in the resolution?
We've already taken care of that. So everything's good as far as the tracing for the funds.
Okay, so this is just for the awarding of the bid?
Correct.
Okay.
When the contract comes up, then it would, the additional ARPA language would be in there as well.
Okay, all right, very good. All right, ready for a vote?
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Legal.
I'm here tonight to present to you proposed ordinance number 2024-061. This is to authorize the acceptance of Loody Richard Drive, currently a private road, to be dedicated as a public road to the city. This is the, as you can see on the diagram here, this is the, the now private road that goes in front of the, the public safety annex. And the big block of there is going to be your parking lot. So what we're doing is, that is being dedicated to us by Integra Hexagon. So we'll have more flexibility as far as renovating that road for our needs as far as the trucks coming in and out. This is for the first reading.
Okay, thank you. Planning.
First item before you is resolution 2024-100R. And as we discussed at the beginning of tonight's meeting, we are recommending that you approve design development plans. Only, the total cost will be four hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred dollars. We would be retaining the same architectural firm that we had contracted for, for the schematic design drawings. And happy to answer any additional questions that you might have.
Well, yeah, move to approve, then we can...
Do we have, okay, have a second? Okay, so you've moved, you seconded. All right, let's go.
How long is it?
Questions?
Move to approve with the change.
Or name.
Yes, with the amended resolution, it was sent out to you, and you should have it on the dais in front of you.
Yes. And I, I'll start. I'll say that I wasn't going to vote for it if it was the one point seven. We've talked about this at length, that the Stars were very successful for thirty years. And then they stopped being successful because they didn't keep their stadium up. They, they weren't fresh. This project was in the original plans as far as there's an elevator shaft in left field. So there's probably going to always be something out there. So we were very, had great foresight in looking ahead as opportunities where we could increase the space of the stadium. As several people have mentioned, we... As several people have mentioned, we, we're at the mercy of minor league baseball and major league baseball. There's projects that we have to do that are about six million dollars and we have to do those. We wanna keep the Trash Pandas here. They're hugely successful. People around the world know Madison because of the Trash Pandas. I will support this resolution. Right now, at this particular moment in time, I don't support the four-story increased venue. I think that that would be a fabulous project when the stadium needed a refinish from when it kind of got tired and, and it needed a boost of energy, a resurgence, if you will, of amenities. Right now, I think it would be a great burden to put on our taxpayers. But for this particular resolution, I will support it. But looking ahead, definitely support what minor league baseball is requiring of us.
One of the things that I wanna point out is this is just for the plans. This is not approving or greenlighting either project. This resolution is only for the development of the plans.
And only the design development plans. It is not for the construction documents. You would come back to council to get your authorization on those, that next set of plans. That's correct.
Thank you. Also, before we would get to the point where we would greenlight the project or not, I would like for us to make sure that we have looked at all of our construction projects for the next three to five years and look at the opportunity costs that are involved in the decision to greenlight either one of these projects. Because there is always an opportunity cost for every project. And right now, we do not, I mean, we, last year, we saw a three-year plan for roads, but that needs, you know, an updated plan for roads and any other projects that are capital imprisonment projects, we need to take into account for, as we're making these decisions, so that we are not going to overburden the city. And so, that is a request I'd like to just get on the record now, that we can have that before it's time to greenlight this, these projects or this project.
We should probably be starting our next fiscal year planning process, probably right during this time where we're doing the DD plans, should they be approved. So, that may dovetail nicely.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I had a question. According to your letter here, you said there are some unresolved questions. However, an alternative action would be approved. What are these unresolved actions?
Well, I think one of the things that you discussed at the work session is interest rates specifically. So, I, I use the phraseology of unresolved, but it's, it's a dynamic issue, right? And so, I think the, some of the council members, anyway, expressed, as did the consultant, the fact it'd be nice to have a little bit more time, right? Just to see if interest rates do come down. I think as, at least one of the council members has mentioned and it was certainly discussed at the work session, certainly having continued conversations with Ball Corp about this project. And so, those would be the two primaries. There may be some other ideas out there. Going forward with design development documents will take, and the cost estimating that we'll do will take about four months total. And based upon the consultant's, you know, description of the expected timeframe for an adjustment in interest rates, that may work out. You know, we may see some movement in the market or the market may, you know, not change and that's also an information item for the council when it gets to the next phase of this project, should we get there.
Okay, thank you for explaining that.
Mm-hmm.
I, I think one other thing it does is it gives you the ability to get moving right now, which we have to have. But it also gives us a chance to work with Ball Corps and also the Town Madison folks on the perimeter of the stadium. I don't think there's any question that if council works to decide to do this, it fiscally made sense and you decided to do it. Just like the ramps when they were announced, jet fuel development over there, this will be the final piece of, you know, building everything out kinda close to the centerfield piece, the right field piece. And we still wanna make sure from a parking standpoint, we've got a good game plan for that, for the last piece. So, not only does it give us a little bit more time to do that, it gives us time to look at interest rates, gonna have to be done anyway. And then lastly, it gives us a chance to work as a team to figure out how we collectively can make this work, but also make sure that we've got the parking we need.
And just to be very clear on this, the request that we're making is design development for both scenarios, both the single build and the four-story structure. Again, just the design development plans. And then we would be coming back to you to decide, you know, what you would wanna do for your next step.
What would that next step be? And what is the process to get to a, here's what it costs to build X or here's what it costs to build Y?
So, after design development, we would go into construction documents. As I mentioned, we prepare the design development documents, then we would update our cost numbers. When we did the original Toyota Field, we certainly had a number that we were working against, if you will. So, we did some value engineering after the DD stage before we went into the construction document stage. I would expect that we'd probably go through that same exercise if, for no other, no other reason to, you know, really just evaluate what is really necessary in the structure and also thinking about when we go out to bid, it's nice sometimes you build in some alternates to give you some flexibility on how much you're gonna expend. So, after DD, it's the construction document stage. Then after construction documents, we would be coming back to council to ask you to approve going out to bid. So, you've got multiple steps before the city would be committed to anything.
Thinking of backward scheduling.
Mm-hmm.
I know the majors gave some kind of a thought timeline for basically in which you became non-compliant. You started getting like, you know, dings against you and maybe some amount of points or something. You know, they had recourse to do X or Y. What was that and what are those details? I can't remember.
So, the good news is we, we met our requirement for the start of the twenty-four season. And we were working on, I think some of the improvements are finalized. We had to move a shower wall and all of that type of thing. Our next requirement was to have this facility completed for the start of the twenty-five season, which isn't happening. And I think it's, I don't know what MLB will do. I, I think we have thought that as long as we were making steady progress and, you know, hopefully had the project under construction, some form of the project under construction, by the time that deadline rolls around, that MLB would not fine, you know, Ball Corp or the city. But I, I really don't know what will occur and I don't know if Garrett has any idea. But yeah, that, that question hasn't been called yet because that timeline hasn't hit for any team because we're all, all of the teams are facing the same deadline. So, we're hoping that, you know, if we're showing a real commitment and, and again, we've got something under construction, that we won't be financially penalized.
Thank you. I got a question about construction documents. So, what's, when's the timeframe of when we would get those? I mean, it.
So, the consultant had indicated that it would be a total of ten months to have all the construction documents completed. So, and again, we were thinking we'd be starting potentially last month, but that basically puts us into fall. If, let's say, we get through DD and construction documents, we're looking at the fall before we'd be able to bid the project out, which is actually a good time to go to market for a bid, in my experience. But we're gonna be, you know, the, the negative is, is that you kinda get into the winter months when you're starting construction. But we'll worry about that if we get there.
Of what we're doing tonight helps you, doesn't slow you down?
Completely, yeah.
Thank you.
I have some comments. My big thing is, does the burden of the stadium infrastructure improvements fall upon the taxpayer? In the end, do they end up having to pay a lot because so many things that thought would happen weren't gonna happen and stuff? And that's a big concern, looking at the numbers, which I did. I did a very thorough study of what Russia put together. And if you, if you look at the numbers strictly as an investment, okay, you have to look at the cost that we have to incur before as, as part of the investment itself and how we cover those costs and then you go forward. So, I looked at the, um, I looked at it in this inclusive way. So, I added the architectural design cost, which will still be seven, one point seven million, whether it's all one, if we do the larger projects, right? And it'll still be the, the big number. And then you add the fact that for the first four years, according to Russia's number, we fall short for the first four to a ten of two hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. So, that, right away, you've got a negative balance of two million before we've done anything. And then you show, once you get into it, it's twenty thirty before we start actually having a positive cash flow, again, according to Russia's numbers. And so, once you take off all the negatives, it took fourteen years before we were actually, as an investment, making money on it. I know we'll be bringing in money before that, but we have such an up, our upstart was so expensive that it takes time, strictly as an investment. Okay, 'cause that's what everybody's been talking about. Well, what, this is an investment, this is an investment. Well, you look at these numbers and that's not really what it's showing. It's not going to give us a lot of money anytime soon. And to me, that's a big concern because then, um, I like have to look out at our employees or I have to look at the people that want our roads improved and I'm like, hey, sorry, we've tied up twenty-two million dollars in this bond now in order to get money up pretty far down the road. And it's an opportunity cost that seems pretty high to be losing for the, for the citizens. And I've talked to a lot of people. And I appreciate the people that came out today and spoke. And the, in fact, knowing that I've talked to, and I wasn't selective. I just talked to people that I was seeing on the streets or down at the store, wherever. I, I tend to just ask people their question, right? And every citizen asked about going into this additional debt. When I asked them, they're like, why are you even considering this? You know, they don't, they, none of them said, this is a great deal. It's a wonderful use of our tax dollars. I mean, because we have a really good stadium already, okay? And the part, the clubhouse part is kind of a separate matter from the total thing. But it's, the numbers just aren't there to say this is a great, a great use of the taxpayer money, in my opinion, after I've done this analysis of it. Yeah, they, a lot of them would say, why aren't we putting this money towards schools? I would be all about it if we were going into debt to pay for a school. But to go into debt for something else at the stadium, which really, it's discretionary, just doing the upper part. We have to do the, the bottom clubhouse. I get that. But that extra part's really just discretionary. And so many of the numbers that were put together for, say, well, there'd be a thousand people, ten different concerts, that sort of thing. Well, those concerts could still happen. There was so much of this that could still happen if we don't do that extra bit. And I understand why they would want it. I mean, I surely do. I mean, they get all the money from the suites. We get a dollar per person. And y'all get the revenue from renting out the suites. That's great. You also get the, um, the profit off of the food. We get the taxes off of the food. I totally understand it from y'all's point. But when you do a financial analysis and these numbers look so poorly, it's because we don't have all the numbers because all of the money coming in is coming in, some of it's just to Ball Corp. And I don't, I don't have any of those numbers. And just looking at what we have to put together for twenty-two million and how much the taxpayers are at risk and how you really don't see a very good return for years out, I just, um, I would just, right now, if we were voting, it would just be a straight up no because this, to my opinion and from what the people tell me, it's not something they want. And I am very concerned about what Mike brought up and having to talk about legally, can we even be spending this money in this? Now, that was the first I've heard. But has any of that been looked into? Has, are legal looked into this matter? I'm, I'm asking. Do, have we?
I, I don't know if legal has looked into anything recently, but I, I can assure you that when this project was approved, there was an exhaustive legal analysis done before the city took on the debt that it took on. There were multiple attorneys involved. We had outside legal counsel. And it would be hard for me to imagine that the previous counsel would have entered into a contract lightly without thinking of that. And I think that you, you kind of summarized, you know, in summarizing your concerns, you summarized and kind of encapsulated some of the conversation from the work session, which is why we're not asking council to approve a one point seven million contract with the architect. We're asking council to approve just the design documents at the four hundred and ninety-five, five hundred thousand dollar cost because that keeps us on track with either project and it allows the council to get some of the additional information that you highlighted. It allows us to see if the market is going to change. So, we're not asking council to approve a four-story project in its totality. We're not even asking council to go out to bid for that project. What we're saying is we want to, we think it's advisable to keep the flexibility of either the one-story or the four-story. Give us some time to gather information, see what happens with the market. And so, that's why we're asking for your approval of the amended resolution this evening.
And work on the perimeter of.
And, and as the mayor said, working on all.
The game plan you can bring back and say, this is, you know, what you're gonna see, so.
So, you've kind of encapsulated kind of what is driving this amended resolution before you this evening. Again, understanding the sensitivity, understanding the, the ask that this is. And, and we've talked about, none of us like this, right? This is imposed upon us in terms of just even having to do the clubhouse. And, but how do we make lemonade here? And that, that, we are in the business of, of making lemonade when we can, given our resources. And so, that's what we're, we're trying to look at. Summer's coming. We need some lemonade.
Mm-hmm. Okay, I also would like to thank Joey for itemizing all the, all those food places that are over there in Town Madison right now because all that and actually, if we do not include those two hotels into the must-go-to stadium category, all that will go to help pay for those bridges and all that has been, you know, we've already got those bonds out there, too, and all that revenue has to be going there. So, I'm thrilled that there is growth over there and it is allowing us to pay those bills. I just wanted to thank him for that.
Any other questions or comments? Are you feeling ready to vote on this?
Mm, mm-hmm.
Uh, thank you, Mary Beth, for bringing us some solution that isn't quite the one point seven four five million. And thank you for your work. We have a motion in the second, right? Ready for vote?
Councilmember Robleski.
Aye.
Councilmember Powell.
Aye.
Council President Bartlett.
Aye.
Councilmember Spears.
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw. Councilmember Denzine.
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford.
Aye.
This motion passes. Now, do we need to even vote on the second? Can we withdraw this one in light of the first motion?
I think it'd be more efficient to table it, do a motion to table.
I make a motion to table Resolution Twenty Twenty Four Dash Zero Ninety Three.
Second.
Sure. And then this tabling of this motion, if it came back, it would look very different. It was, okay, because part of that.
It just gives you more options to not take this motion.
Part of the, part of the cost in approving the four ninety-five is in that six oh eight.
Right.
So, that number wouldn't be the same if we were to bring it back. So it'll be, uh, quite different.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, ready for...
I mean, along those lines, when we table something, we generally have to say we're tabling it for X amount of time.
Yeah.
Is that correct?
Yeah, I, I'm not, I don't know...
If it's coming back as something different, what's the point of even table on it?
Rather just get rid of it, but, 'cause it's gonna just be completely different. But if we, if we have to table it, or they can, technically, it's continuing.
Well, we, yeah, we could vote it down.
Yeah.
This one thing, it gives you more options to table.
I hadn't said no in a while.
Yeah, but it, it'll be very different.
We know the values, we know the money's gonna change, so this isn't gonna come back to be voted on, so...
I, I'm okay if you wanna, given that you've approved the other one, if you wanna deny that one, and then we just start with a clean slate the next time, I'm, I'm, I think that's fine. I don't think that sends a wrong message.
Or can you table for further notice?
Well, tabling is usually at the same meeting. Continuing is when you do it to another meeting, so tabling wouldn't even be appropriate. So, um...
I would say we just vote it down. I mean, that's, that's a bit good of being lazy.
I think that's clean.
Make a motion to approve 2024-093.
Second.
All right, motion in a second. Ready to vote.
Councilmember Robleski?
Nay.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Nay.
Councilmember Spears?
Nay.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Nay.
Councilmember Seaford?
Nay.
Motion failed.
I almost never want you to deny something. I know.
You're mad at me.
All right.
Okay.
We're ready?
Mm-hmm.
All right, last planning item is resolution number 2024-112-R. And this is to authorize a professional service agreement with Paragon Heritage LLC. Um, and this is a firm that can assist the city prepare up to four grant applications for the restoration of 225 Mill Road, which is the Farley Wan House, which is a property that the city was given, and we're contemplating this idea of, could it be restored and become a period home museum? This individual is a Madison resident, has a background in historical preservation, and, um, we thought it would be a good use of the money that we have in that account to see if we can't find some other money.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion in a second, any questions? Ready for vote?
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth.
My favorite person.
He's gonna, he's gonna be more consistent, though, doesn't he?
Yeah.
Can't stop here again.
Uh, I have resolution 2024-122-R, authorizing a change order number one to bid project number 2023-009. Ballfield fencing, uh, to remove weed barrier from the scope of the contract. This is for, uh, the fencing over at the Town Madison, or formerly Hexagon Fields. Um, the fencing company was waiting on us to do some work to the fields, which delayed their schedule. They're out of mobile, and asked if they could pull this from the contract, and our guys can put the weed barrier in. So, say it's a city about $2,000.
Motion to approve.
Second. Okay, motion second, any questions?
Just to make sure it's pulling, it, it's giving that service to us to do, and the money to do it with.
And the material, correct.
Okay.
Okay, ready for vote?
Councilmember Powell?
Aye.
Councilmember Robleski?
Aye.
Council President Bartlet?
Aye.
Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
Councilmember Shaw? Councilmember Denzine?
Aye.
Councilmember Seaford?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Any announcements?
Nope.
Ready to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned.